The following public hearing was advertised in both the record and the Herald News on November 22, 2019 specifying the time, date, and location of the public hearing.
Okay, well, it is not a roll call. So can I have a motion to open the public hearing on the proposed salary proposal?
Seven.
Freeholders, after, Best, Duffy, James, before, Deputy Director Lozare, Director Bartlett?
Yes.
Does anyone present a desire to be heard on this proposal that we will have in our regular meeting, the ordinary public comment period? This is the public comment opportunity specifically for the proposal that was laid out in the U.N.
Saint Owen is proposing a move to close the public court.
Thank you.
Freeholders, Best, Duffy, James, before, Deputy Director Lozare, Director Bartlett?
Yes.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn this hearing?
Please have a motion.
Thank you.
Made by Duffy.
Three more.
Second made by Freeholder before.
Yes.
Freeholder Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozare.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes.
Thank you all very much. All right, we'll get the music. That moves us along to the conference agenda. Since it is your initiative, we're going to let you tell us who's best on the board on the roll.
Well, we always start the holiday season off with a holiday concert by not only the St. County Techcom Choir, but the St. County Techcom Choir.
Let me just try to get out of the way. I have to say, Sandy and I were here earlier today, this afternoon. We did our tree lighting, downed an employer of our company here. We had a bunch of kids come over from next door, three, four, five-year-olds, and they were good at school. And I tell you, those kids had so much fun, smiled year to year, singing all the Christmas music. It was really tall and incredibly convincing Santa, who really, the long resistance pause, made it a very special day for all those kids. If you haven't yet, make a point to check out our tree now, or let us hear the music. People singing the country blues and the ground, and everyone else was amazed this afternoon. That's really a positive experience.
Excellent. Here are the Techcom Choir, led by their director, Mr. Passan. We also have Mr. Martinez, co-director, and our organist, Mr. Parker. Thank you so much, always a pleasure. Thank you all for coming. We also like to thank the school administrator, Diana Labosco, for the wonderful job she does and for allowing the choir to be here and celebrate with us today.
Ding dong, ding dong, ding dong, ding dong. It's the most wonderful time of the year. With the trees still paling.
And everyone cheering.
You'll be a good cheer. It's the most wonderful time of the year. Ding dong, ding dong, ding dong, ding dong. It's the happiest season of all. With those holiday greetings.
And they're happy greetings.
When friends come to call. It's the happiest season of all. Ding dong, ding dong, ding dong, ding dong. There'll be parties for roasting marshmallows, for toasting and paraling out in the snow. There'll be scary ghost stories and tales of the glories of Christmas is long on the It's the most wonderful time of the year. There'll be much mistletoe.
And hearts will be growing.
When loved ones are near. It's the most wonderful time of the year. Ding dong, ding dong, ding dong, ding dong. There'll be parties for roasting marshmallows, for toasting and paraling out in the snow. There'll be scary ghost stories and tales of the glories of Christmas is long on the It's the most wonderful time of the year. There'll be much mistletoe.
And hearts will be growing.
When loved ones are near. It's the most wonderful time, yes, the most wonderful time, oh, the most wonderful time of the year. Ding dong, ding dong, ding dong, ding dong. Said the night went to the little lamb. Do you see what I see? Do you see what I see? Way up in the sky, little lamb. Do you see what I see? Do you see what I see? A star, a star, dancing in the night with a tail as big as a prize. With a tail as big as a prize. Bum bum bum, bum bum bum. Said the little lamb to the shepherd boy. Do you hear what I hear? Do you hear what I hear? Bringing to the sky, shepherd boy. Do you hear what I hear? Do you hear what I hear? A song, a song, high above the trees with a voice as big as the sea. With a voice as big as the sea. Bum bum bum, bum bum bum. Said the shepherd boy to the mighty king. Do you know what I know? Do you know what I know? In your palace, war mighty king. Do you know what I know? Do you know what I know? As children, children, singing the song that a queen is silver and gold. That a queen is silver and gold. Bum bum bum, bum bum bum. Said the king to the people everywhere. Listen to what I say. Listen to what I say. Pray for peace, people everywhere. Listen to what I say. Listen to what I say. A child, a child, sleeping in the night, he will bring us goodness and light. He will bring us goodness and light. Oh, holy night, the stars are brightly shining. In even night, O dear Savior's birth. Away the world, disin and never pining. Till ye are here and the soul will give to earth. Only a love born, no weary world retires. For yonder, where thy new and glorious light. On your knee. O dear, the angel's voice says, "Oh, night, be night." Oh, night, when Christ is born. Night, the hour of night, when Christ is born. On your knee. O dear, the angel's voice says, "Oh, night, be night." Oh, night, when Christ is born. Oh, night, the hour of night, oh, the hour of night. Oh, Christmas tree, oh, Christmas tree, you stand in birt of beauty. Oh, Christmas tree, oh, Christmas tree, you stand in birt of beauty. Your bells are green and summer's glow, and do not fear in winter's snow. Oh, Christmas tree, oh, Christmas tree, you stand in birt of beauty. You stand in birt of beauty. O, tanenbaum, o, tanenbaum, big twos in deine Blätter. O, tanenbaum, o, tanenbaum, big twos in deine Blätter. Du wirst nicht blut aus der Sommerzeit, mein Land, die Wintergel ist nein. O, tanenbaum, o, tanenbaum, big twos in deine Blätter. Big twos in deine Blätter. Oh, Christmas tree, oh, Christmas tree, you stand in birt of beauty. You stand in birt of beauty. Cracks on roses and whispers on kittens.
And awkward petals and poor old inventors.
Groundlings were bracken this night after spring. These are a few of my favorite things. White ponies and apple noodles.
Crowe's bells and sleigh bells and chimes so renew.
Lucky Santa with a balloon on their wings. These are a few of my favorite things. Those in white costumes with blue feathers and sashes.
No place to stay or hide when I rush in.
There were white winters that melted into springs. These are a few of my favorite things.
When the dog barks.
When the bees sings. When I'm feeling sad, I simply remember my favorite things and then I don't feel so These are a few of my favorite things.
When the dog barks.
When the bees sings. When I'm feeling sad, I simply remember my favorite things and then I don't feel so Angels we have heard a-ha, singing, singing through the night. And the mountains in reply, echoing their great delight. Gloria, glory, our beloved, we shall see thee, oh. Gloria, glory, our beloved, we shall see thee, oh. Shepherd's wine is true belief, why these songs of happy cheer. What drink brightens the angels' teeth, what light shines in tears. Gloria, glory, our beloved, we shall see thee, oh. Gloria, glory, our beloved, we shall see thee, oh. Gloria, glory, our beloved, we shall see thee, oh. Gloria, glory, our beloved, we shall see thee, oh.
Any other questions to this end?
Oh.
Can I say something to you, Jim?
Please.
I've been watching the Techcoms up here for 14 years, February and February. They're spectacular, absolutely spectacular. This year, just one of the best years of the year for them. They lose kids every year to graduation, they get new kids, and this group was just spectacular.
I couldn't agree more. Thank you, Bruce. So that brings us to the review of our agenda N1 and O1 through O88. Counsel, any late starters?
This is Director Drew Yu. We do have several late starters and several amendments. With your permission, I'd like to go through with the others then. Let me do the late starters first. O89 is a resolution retaining the services of law firm Erica and Bernstein Associates, LLC, to provide outside legal services to the county of Passaic, and that is for a couple of confidential investigations that are necessary. R- O90 is a resolution accepting a grant of $254,540 from the D.O.S. 2020 C3 County Grant Program, New Jersey, 2020 census to assist the county of Passaic as part of municipalities in organizing and completing county activities that will ensure the highest participation in the upcoming 2020 presidential census. This is the result of a grant application from several meetings ago. And O91 is a resolution amending R- 2018, that resolution 1044, dated December 27, 2018, to authorize wireless cell service and equipment from Verizon Wireless from the sum of $189,000, which was in that resolution, to $264,000 to cover the remainder of 2019. Now, those are the three late starters. We are asking that three resolutions be amended, Mr. Director. One is number 87, which is a resolution for a more contract to civil solutions through state contract for E.S.R.I. Aggress Enterprises Management Solutions, and this is for Phase One, Civil Solutions. The resolution was for the whole thing, this is only for Phase One, that's what the amendment's about. Number 70 is the omnibus purchasing resolution by the Passaic County Sheriff's Department. There was an error on one of the purchasing ones, and that's why we're asked to not be amended. And then there was a resolution authorizing increase in the fees charged by the Passaic County Sheriff's Office for off-duty traffic assignments. The amendment is that they're not going to charge additional fees for Passaic County run jobs on our roads. That was number 79.
Okay, so all the fees are going up for Sheriff's Office, they're not going up for projects?
They're not going to go up for county-sponsored projects on county roads, other than that, Dave.
Okay. Is there any need to go into a second session?
No, there is not, Mr. Director.
Any questions from any of the freeholders on anything they've heard from counsel or anything on the consent agenda? All right. Well, if we take the roll call slowly enough for adjourned the conference agenda, it'll be six o'clock, and we can roll straight into our meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn the conference?
Make that motion.
Freeholders, after.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James. Before.
Yes, at six o'clock.
Deputy Director Lozare.
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes.
And it is six o'clock. Thank you all very much, Freeholders, for taking that ridiculous exercise. That brings us to our regular meeting of the St. County Board of Directors and Freeholders for December 10, 2019. Lou, you start us off with an announcement of the open public meeting law and a roll call.
Ladies and gentlemen, notice requirement of open public meetings laws not satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location, including any annual notice adopted at the reelection meeting filed with the county clerk posted in the administration building and mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law. Freeholders, after.
Here.
Best.
Here.
Duffy.
Here.
James.
Here.
Before.
Here.
Deputy Director Lozare. Director Bartlett?
Here.
Please rise with the information, the pledge, and the motion.
Oh God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love, be gracious enough to bless thy servants, our freeholders, and the county of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord and Savior.
Please roll in, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pause at this point of every meeting for a moment, allow to remember those who died serving our nation overseas in uniform here in the United States. Today, we particularly remember several that our county has lost recently. Councilman Garrett Sane of Hawthorne and Councilman Keith Saliano of Hilton, who passed away recently, as did Jose Suarez, father of Passaic County, former Passaic County Judge and current post county prosecutor, Esther Suarez. And unfortunately, this afternoon, we have to add this Detective Joe Seale of the Jersey City Police Department and five others who lost their lives in a shooting incident this afternoon at the J.C. Kosher Supermarket in Jersey City. incident this afternoon at the J.C. Kosher Supermarket in Jersey City. Can I have a motion for approval in the minutes of number 18? Second. Preholders, after, we have Best. We have Duffy. We have James. Before. Deputy Director Lozare. Director Bartlett. No proclamations? No, we'll move on to the next one. Can I have a motion to adjourn the order of the... James and Duffy? Preholders, after, best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James. Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozare. Director Bartlett.
Yes.
We agree bond ordinance 2019, that's here and up.
Bond ordinance providing for Lambert Castle and Carrick House restoration in and by the county of Passaic, New Jersey, according $10 million, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $7,750,000 bonds, or those of the county to finance the part, the cost of their bond.
Can I have a motion to open the public hearing on bond ordinance 2019, that's here and up? Preholders, after. Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James. Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozare. Director Bartlett.
Yes.
Does anyone present desire to be heard on bond ordinance 2019, that's here and up?
You want to question?
Yes. Thank you. Preholders, after.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy. James. Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozare. Director Bartlett. Yes, if you'll slow down, please. Can I have a motion to adopt bond ordinance 2019, that's here and up? Preholders, after.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozare. Director Bartlett.
Yes.
Frankly, just curious about that bond ordinance. Keep an eye on northjersey.com. I was up at Lambert Castle yesterday with a reporter and a video reporter from there talking about what we're going to be doing at Lambert Castle over the next three years. If you miss the Christmas boutique, then you're out of block because it's closed until 2022, so you're going to visit like a limited. Can I have a motion to resume the regular... So we're going to just take a minute and hand out copies of some of the papers that were discussed at the end of the conference agenda. In the meantime, why don't we have that motion to resume the regular... Preholder, after.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozare.
Yes.
Yes. That brings us to preholder reports. I kind of jumped ahead and didn't mind on Lambert Castle, but I'll mention also that this time next week, next Tuesday, join us downstairs and the Rotunda will be kicking off our Census 2020 outreach efforts in the press conference and release of a couple of videos that I think you're really going to enjoy. That is part of the grant that was added at the base donor today as O90, about $4 million in state and New Jersey, that is going to enable us to make sure that we have a complete count here in Passaic County, not just on Halloween, but every day.
First of all, I know Phil and Louis War said this earlier, but I just want to say in front of everyone, our housing department agency, my... There you are. Got a great rating. They had a surprise visit from Hug. And Hug went in and looked at all the paperwork and, you know, James was telling us about it, but they got a 97% and a great kind of a heart. Did a great job. And then last night, we had a great time at practice, Healthcare Center, Lucinda, you know, we celebrated 90 years up there. And I think the most heartwarming part of the whole thing was that any of the residents there that spoke, spoke about what a warm, nurturing atmosphere it is there and how it isn't more than just a residential center, it's a home to them. And that's how they feel that everybody there makes it a home. And I think that that is the highest compliment that they could possibly go. So congratulations, Lucinda, you created an atmosphere and a culture up there that is second to none. And I'm looking forward to another 90 years and I may not be here, or I may be there in the 90 years. And finally, everybody, I wanted to wish you the best of the holiday. You know, we're having our party here on the 19th and I hope to see you all here and we can celebrate the upcoming season. So thank you all for sharing what you do.
In spirit of the holidays, I would just wish everyone Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, a holiday to celebrate, or like me, just enjoy the time.
TJ?
Happy holidays, everybody. You want to... Hey, TJ, you write that yourself?
Yeah.
I, you know, said yet, don't have it, of course, I enjoyed last night with the anniversary on there, so treatness and you do some job, you and your staff. I know Dr. Reba wanted to be at the United Nations, but she wasn't. She may have been able to say something about... My uncle was there for almost a year, maybe a little bit longer. He thought it was like nice to be able to walk out of there, but I've seen first thirteen and when I first came on board, I was a little skeptical, we were just beginning, you know, we were pretty old, everybody going at you and saying that we shouldn't be spending that kind of money. Well, let me tell you something, as when he was friends and was meeting people and you were there last night and see some of the people that you brought to life and took them there about that work obstruction and looking at so many people that were there years and years before us and kudos to them as well and that was nice and bad. You know, it wasn't Democrats and Republicans complaining, it was humanity, Floyd and... Merry Christmas, everyone. I heard Sarah, she's been out. You in house tonight? How many do you go to your office, Director? I'm sure.
Chris?
I just want to reiterate what I saw and TJ said, "Happy holidays, everybody." You know I love Christmas. I was a model patient when I was there. Terry was actually making the ass, I remember, and it was really difficult. We can say what we say now, now we say, anybody who didn't like the food, he was bitching about everything. Today, I'll be very complimentary, I'm very happy to hear it. Come on the right side.
I'll be the lady next to Sarah, you know the rumor.
Calling Joe, I don't need to, I'm calling. Well, that made my holiday, thanks.
The secret is, Terry, that wasn't a bell, that was one of those morphine things?
It worked.
It takes a lot to knock it off.
I'm still after it.
Well, Pat, that brings it to you.
Beautiful.
Your head in your hands.
I have no words. I do wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah. Unfortunately, the festivities of this time of year have been overshadowed by the events in Jersey City. Director Lloyd, if you can send over the signatures of this board through you and please convey to Mayor Corrigan that reports are listened and to be strong in spirit. Thank you.
Certainly will do that. Thank you, Pat.
Director through you, if I could, as part of the record, we need to do this, but I also need to do this because I think it's something that I know you all are very proud of. But recently, we received the upgrade from Moody's to a AA1 and we recently went out to the market to sell bonds and some notes and I just want to, for the record, give you the results of that sale. So we had 42, we sold $42,990,000 worth of bonds at an interest rate of 2.29%. So people who have been around the county for longer than I have have said that it's an historic low and attributable to our upgraded bond rate, which is fantastic for all of you and others in your capital, most importantly, to the taxpayers who will pay back far less interest than past years. We also sold $23 million worth of tax-exempt notes at a net interest of 1.2% and $21.9 million worth of taxable notes at a net interest of 1.79%. So kudos to all of you on the job of...
Thank you, Tony. You know, I'm a part of one of the older and using the church. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job to you, to the entire team that keeps the finances in the kind of shape that has get credit rating upgrades, get borrowing at tax kind of low rates and still keep the typical tax rate increase zero through the last three years and below 1% through the last round. So that brings us to the oral portion of the evening meeting. Can I have a motion to open the public board? Preholders, after.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James. Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozare. Director Bartlett. Yes. Mr. Bartlett, you members of the public have the opportunity to address the preholder board. You can approach the podium, speak for up to three minutes. Please introduce yourself with name and address and note that what you say will become part of the public record of today's meeting.
Seeing no voting on move to post public board.
Thank you. Preholders, after. Yes, Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James. Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozare.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozare.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes.
I think the voices are... Let us move on to N1, Resolution Part of the Two-thirds vote. Motion for the Resolution N1. Preholders, after.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James. Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozare. Director Bartlett.
Yes.
Okay. Let's start with a motion to amend items O70, O79, and O87. This is drawn by counsel during the conference amendment. And the motion? Move it. That was the... Preholder, after.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozare. Director Bartlett. Yes. I have a motion to add late starters O89, 90, and 91 to the consent amendment. I'll move that. Preholders, after.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozare. Director Bartlett. Yes. So as amended and extended, can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda, O1 to O91? Thank you. Preholders, after.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Use our number 45, we got some rest.
Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozare.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes.
We just did new business. I have a motion on personnel. Thank you. Preholders, after.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozare.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes.
I have a motion on bills. Preholders, after.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozare.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes.
Before we adjourn, we do have one more meeting this year, but this is our last evening meeting. I just want to thank my colleagues on the day. We're a really wonderful year. It's a privilege to serve each and every one of you and it was an honor to be here at the director's chairs this year. It wasn't always easy, but it was always a good group effort and I appreciate it from each one of you. Wish you all happy holidays.
Very nice. It was a great time working.
Thank you, Senator.
I know it wasn't easy sometimes, you know, but you did a great job. It was a good year, very good year. Proud to be serving on your...
I'm talking, Senator.
No, 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 everybody, everyone else you got...
Get out now.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I don't like you.
Motion to adjourn.
Me too.
Preholders, after.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Before. Deputy Director Lozare. Director Bartlett. Yes. Thank you all very much. Great presentation. Very special.